It's gonna be all day.
Right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight on a beautiful, almost summer's night. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. And I'd pause to ask Superintendent Wimmer to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda, which was provided in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Kurt, motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. I should have noted that we recognize the quorum of our board tonight with all seven members' presence. And so, we will move on to our first regular agenda item, which is recognition. And so, it's always a great way to start a meeting with recognitions. So, the board would like to take some time tonight to recognize this year's employee award recipients in multiple categories. These individuals were nominated along with dozens of other outstanding employees for this recognition. We're going to begin by recognizing the winner winners of this year's RALPHS Education Foundation Award. The board's deeply grateful for the contributions of these individuals. We'd like to share some words of praise that were collected from colleagues of these distinguished educators. So, we're going to take some turns around. And Kurt, I believe you are going to introduce our first.
Yeah, is Jackie Drover here? Step right up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jackie is currently a sixth-grade teacher at Silverbrook. She has served the West Bend School District for over 20 years. She is dedicated not to just Silverbrook Intermediate School, but to the entire teaching profession. Her dedication to her students is unparalleled. Many of her students say that she's the greatest teacher they have ever had. True? Because that she has shown them how to learn and how to believe in themselves. She accomplishes this amazing feat by making sure her students know how much she believes in them. Jackie actively participates in developing and updating curriculum. She is an expert in her field, and her input into curricular decisions is deeply respected by her peers. Jackie, thanks for your contributions to the success of our students and staff.
Thank you.
I'm supposed to say something?
If you'd like, you may. If you'd like, please, go ahead.
I just want to thank you guys for all you do, the unfung heroes. We have a great staff at Silverbrook. Some of them will also be recognized this evening. It wouldn't be possible without them, what we do every day for kids. I've had many of your children as well in classes, so it's been wonderful to get to know everybody in my home district. I went to school here. I've lived here my whole life, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, I believe Melanie's going to introduce our next award recipient.
All right, is Shelley Krieger here? Shelley is a Spanish teacher at West High School. She has served the West Bend School District for over 30 years. She brings to life the Spanish language in formats that are accessible, fun, and pragmatic. Her classroom would best be characterized as having the following elements: trust, a sense of belonging, meaningful content, multiple modalities for instructional delivery, and an engaging emphasis on technology and personalized learning. Simply stated, Shelley defines what a dynamic educator is. She is a universally recognized leader in the high school who volunteers to serve on committees, curriculum projects, in-service programs, and at workshops. Shelley, the board thanks you for all you have done to support our mission of excellence for all.
Thank you. It was kind of ironic when I received the email that I had been nominated for the award, because I think it was within a couple days of also receiving an email that I could retire. And that was within 24 hours of telling my Spanish five students that I think I need to get out and retire. And I said to them, especially after I saw that nomination, I said, like, "I can't retire until I get it right." And I just don't think I'm there yet. I'm not getting it right, but I appreciate that somebody thinks I am. So, thank you. Thanks.
And John, I think you have our next award recipient.
Correct. Would Jackie Weedmeyer please come forward to be recognized? Jackie currently works as a literacy specialist in Jackson Elementary. Her love for teaching is evidence everywhere you look at Jackson, including not only in her classroom, but in all the school's classrooms, in the hallways, and everywhere she meets a student. She is knowledgeable about all topics related to literacy and absolutely loves everything about reading. Her expertise and passion about this topic is evident whenever you discuss the subject with her. Jackie tutors students in reading after school and is a leader in the new teachers mentoring program. Onboarding new members of the team each year throughout the district, her compassion for and dedication to others is on full display each day through her positive attitude and continual enthusiasm to learn more. Jackie, the board thanks you for everything you have done for the students and your colleagues.
Thanks. Jackie likes to be behind the scenes where nobody sees her, so this is really hard. But I just want to thank the district and RALPHS for honoring all of the teachers, really. There've been so many wonderful teachers that have been honored, not just here tonight, but in the past, and ones that'll be honored in the future, which I'm excited about. And as for onboarding our new teachers, it's really easy when I have amazing mentors, some of who are here tonight, that can support our new teachers and keep them in the district and loving kids and loving all of your kids. So, thank you.
Kelly, I think you have our next award recipient.
Yes, is Sarah Baker here tonight? Sarah currently serves as a fourth-grade teacher at Green Tree Elementary. Sarah encompasses every great thing a teacher can be for students. She makes it a priority to ensure all of her students are given the opportunity to reach their potential and beyond. Her students know that they are in a class where they will be respected, encouraged, and held accountable. Throughout her more than 20 years of service in the district, Sarah has become a leader in her classroom with grade-level peers, coworkers, and among staff district-wide. The leadership team at Green Tree greatly benefits from Sarah's input and her dedication to keeping all discussions student-focused. Sarah, the school board thanks you for your commitment to excellence in education for all students.
I would also like to thank the board, and I'd also like to thank the RALPHS Foundation. I am a product of the West Bend school systems. I've raised my family here. My kids have had the people and colleagues that I work with that I speak so highly of, and that I'm only here because of their support and the support of you guys as a whole help us as teachers. I appreciate all of that you do.
Thank you. All right, now, we're going to introduce the second category of award recipients. The board also wishes to recognize this year's recipients of the Support Employee of the Year Award. These recipients are members of the district's support staff employee groups. They were also nominated by their colleagues and selected by a panel of previous winners. The board expresses its deep gratitude to these individuals for the dedication they have shown to our students and our staff. And the board would like to share some words of praise collected from colleagues of these exceptional employees. And June, I think you're going to start by introducing our first award recipient.
Yes. Is Sheila Podwell here? Thank you. Sheila has served the district since 2017. She has worked at Green Tree, Silverbrook, and across the entire district. Her ability to reach children of every age and background is just one of the countless talents she has. She wants all students to be successful, and she is willing to help in any way possible to make that happen. Sheila has shown great flexibility in stepping in to help in any capacity that has been needed. She has worked with individual students, mentored and trained other staff on best practices, and even supported entire houses of students while at Silverbrook. Regardless of being asked of regardless of what is being asked of her, Sheila always does it with a smile on her face and with a positive attitude. Sheila, the school board thanks you for your commitment to excellence in education for all students.
I would also like to thank the board for everything that you guys do. I typically watch from home, but I'm glad that I'm here today. And I would like to thank the RALPHS Foundation for the award. I find it to be a great honor to go to all of the schools and learn from so many quality educators, and I get paid to hang out with really cool kids, so I feel very fortunate. Thank you very much.
Chad, you're going to introduce our next award recipient.
Yeah, would Kim Christensen please come forward? Kim is the library media coordinator for the entire district. She has served the district for more than 25 years. Her dedication to the West Bend School District and the nine libraries she oversees is really unmatched. She holds a wealth of knowledge and information on a plethora of topics from A to Z. There's probably a Dewey Decimal joke in there somewhere as well. The patience and joy she shows in her day-to-day interactions with students and staff is always inspiring. Kim not only loves to teach, but loves to continue to learn by attending meetings and professional conferences that help her bring new ideas to our libraries. Her ability to stay organized and manage the overall operations of all of the school libraries through the entire district is absolutely incredible. So, Kim, the board thanks you for all that you've done and for helping support our mission of excellence for all students across all of our libraries. Thank you so much.
I want to thank the board, the district, and every staff member for supporting the libraries. It is near and dear to my heart, always will be. I've had many kids over the years. I'm now working with kids that I had, and they're bringing the kids to the library to do the same thing they had, and they want me to do the same thing and give them the same type of experience. So, that is awesome. And I have wonderful aides working for me and helping me every single day. So, thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Ken. Kurt, you have our next award recipient.
Yes, is Shelley Newman come forward? Shelley has served the district for 10 years as a paraprofessional at Green Tree, where she wears many different hats. She helps at breakfast, is a paraprofessional during the day, fills in for the nurse, serves as a crossing guard, and helps out in the office whenever needed. Shelley always looks outside the box to problem-solve in the classroom, lunchroom, recess, or wherever her help is needed. She is very committed to the students and staff. She is dedicated to helping all students succeed and feel welcome and safe while at school. If someone needs help or a project needs someone to take the reins, you can bet Shelley is the first one in line to jump in and ensure it gets done. Shelley, the school board thanks you for your commitment to excellence in education for all students.
Thank you all for what you do to support us and the teachers and give us the opportunity to support our kids. That's really why we're here, and it's an honor to serve. Thank you.
Melanie, please introduce our next award recipient.
All right, is Jerry Donath here? Hi, Jerry. All right, Jerry has served the district for eight years. He delivers the food to our schools each and every day, no matter the weather. It could be raining, sleeting, snowing, hailing, blizzard conditions, or even 100 degrees, and nothing will slow him down. He has great relationships with the school nutrition team, as well as with teachers, custodial workers, and office personnel. His friendly demeanor and outgoing attitude puts a shining light on any building he enters. He is an outstanding ambassador of the entire nutrition department. Jerry is dependable and has been a great role model for colleagues he has trained over the years. He takes great pride in his work and models what a pursuit of excellence looks like for everyone around him. Jerry, the board thanks you for everything you have done for our students and your colleagues.
Again, thank the board. I'd like to thank the people that wrote all these nice things. So, well, thanks a lot.
John, please introduce our next award recipient.
Would Sachiko Romer please come forward? I don't know if she made it. We're still going to recognize her either way. Sachiko served as a cook for the high school nutrition team. She is dedicated employee that takes great pride in her job. She is an incredible asset to the entire department. She started her journey with us as the high school rotational employee, then moved to substitute cook, and now is one of the full-time cooks at the high school. Sachiko's work ethic is one of the kind. Her top priority is the quality of food that is sent out, and she always wants every batch to be even better than the last. Her communications to the cafeteria coordinator goes above and beyond to make sure that the daily menu is fantastic and the students enjoy the meals offered to them. If Sachiko has any breaks in her day, she always asks others how she can help them. Sachiko, the board would like to thank you for everything you've done for our students and our colleagues.
Kelly, you have our next recipient.
Yes, would Richard Anderson please come forward to be recognized? I will start. Normally, I'm at his door asking for him to bring me things at Decora, so this is really exciting to just be recognizing you and not asking you for things. Richard is the daytime facility technician at Decora Elementary. He is one of the kindest, most generous people at Decora. He not only genuinely cares about the appearance of the building, but also about the students. His previous career as a teacher provides him with insight into what teachers go through on a day-to-day basis, and he strives to make their days easier by serving in whatever way he can. Richard takes students on breaks outside of the classroom when they need one and lets them partner to help his daily duties, which they absolutely love to do. Richard is a superhero to our students. He always has a smile on his face, and both the students and staff at Decora are extremely lucky to have him. He is truly one of a kind. Richard, the school board thanks you for your commitment to excellence in education to all students.
Thanks very much. If it weren't for the teachers, the administrators, the kiddos at Decora, I wouldn't be here. I really am proud to be a member of the Decora family. Everyone in that school, from Mrs. Aiman, A to Z, Ms. Ziegler, make that school a wonderful place to be and learn. So, thanks very much.
Thanks, everyone, for attending tonight. Today's recognition is not the end of celebrating the impressive careers of these individuals. The district will also be recognizing these employees and others at our annual recognition program in May. And so, I'd like again to extend the board's thanks. You know, we heard these wonderful, well-deserved words. We know there are many, many other things unspoken that each of you do behind the scenes each and every day to help. And to all of our award winners, on behalf of the school board, please accept our congratulations and our heartfelt thanks to each of you for everything you've done for our students, our staff, and the families in our community. Thank you again. So, we're going to move on with our agenda, and it is a public meeting, and we always welcome individuals to stay. At the same time, we suspect that many of you, on a beautiful pre-summer night, may have other plans. And so, if you do, that's quite all right. Please feel free to get up and leave if you wish, but also, please feel free to stay. But for those of you who are departing tonight, thank you again for coming. So, we will move on, then, to our next agenda item. All right, we'll give these folks a chance to clear the room. Thank you again for coming. Next on our agenda is Washington County Behavioral Health Grant Presentation. And I believe Superintendent Wimmer that Emily Melstrand and Sean Becker are going to kick this off. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, we invite them to the podium.
I thought you were kicking off.
Yeah, my kickoff is just standing here, so.
All right. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. I'm actually going to invite up to the podium some of our colleagues from Washington County, Julie Driscoll and Josh Showman.
Did I say that right, Josh?
Close enough.
No, I like it to be correct.
Josh Showman.
Showman. To present this check this evening. I just want to give you a little bit of background. So, Sean Becker is a school counselor at Badger Middle School. He's also been highly instrumental over the course of the past year in really working to strengthen our comprehensive mental health framework for our school district. And actually, Sean came to me several months ago and said, "There's this great opportunity to compete for a grant through Washington County," and the grant very much aligns with the work that we're trying to do to support students and families who are experiencing challenges with mental health. We've absolutely seen an uptick in students who are experiencing anxiety and depression. And one of the things that we've recognized as a need in our system is strengthening the referral pathways to support families in gaining access to appropriate and affordable health care. And when I say health care, I'm focusing on the behavioral and mental health care that families need. We have lots of opportunities within our school system. We're fortunate enough to have community providers who office on campus to make it accessible for students, but there's many times where the needs of our kids and families extend beyond that. And so, with the strong support of Sean, we wrote on behalf of this grant opportunity, looking to add a position in our district that's a mental health navigator to directly work with families who need support to make those connections within the community. And then, also looking to provide professional learning for our staff so that they're able to recognize at a quicker, earlier point that students are struggling with mental health difficulties, and then helping to connect families with the care that they need. So, we wrote for the grant. It's been a couple of months, and we are extremely grateful that we've been selected as one of the recipients for that funding. And our partners are here tonight to present that award.
And Sean, you're welcome.
So, good evening. I'm Julie Driscoll. I'm the Health and Human Services Director at Washington County, and I just want to say how grateful I am to the West Bend School District for applying for these funds. The idea around a mental health navigator is a very innovative and a really great idea to help connect kids and families to needed services. So, we very much appreciate the school district applying and are pleased to present this funding that goes through 2026.
Well, the reality is this $192,000 is not our money. It's ARPA money, and we're actually writing a check for Kim's Vest. That thing is amazing. No, no, it really isn't our money. It's our kids' money, because our kids are going to be paying back these dollars for many years to come. And so, I can't think of a better way than to be able to help support mental health programming here in your school district, our school district, as I am a member of it myself. But I'll take you back to 2020, and as we all struggled through the things that we don't want to remember anymore, about how difficult it was in March, April, and May, and even into the summer and fall months, when we were getting kids back to school, we had lots of conversations at the county level about how we were going to address the almost certain mental health crisis that was coming. The loneliness, the isolation that occurred during that time has wreaked havoc on every generation, and we're happy to be able to use dollars that do, in fact, belong to our children, that they'll be paying for years to come, to help hopefully get them on paths to recovery, to support them, and give them an opportunity for prosperity in their lives, however they define that and however you're able to help them. So, we're absolutely thrilled that we're able to collaborate with you once again, and now in this new and different way, and in a way that helps kids. So, thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We'll officially take this up on our agenda later, but appreciate it very much, and thank you for, for your support of, of the district and the community. We appreciate it. All right. We'll move on then to public participation. I have four participant comment cards. I'll just do kind of a last call on comment cards. Anyone else? All right. So with four participants, I will read Board Policy 187. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes a nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and will be given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name in relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. So now I'll invite participants forward to speak. There will be a visible timer here to help you manage your time. I'll alert speakers as to who's on deck, who's next. And finally, to help ensure that all participants are heard and that this meeting runs efficiently, we ask that you please abstain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after public participation comments. So with that, we will proceed with our first speaker tonight, Renee Verden. I hope I pronounced this correctly. Did I get it close?
Yes.
And Jodi Geenan will be, uh, on deck. And it says here that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. Hi, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again tonight about reviewing books for the English curriculum in the school district. Last time I was here, I mentioned the Anatomy and Physiology textbook, which, uh, was used in a Wisconsin accredited community college in 2013, that in nowhere of the hundred-plus-page section of the Reproduction System chapter was it mentioned made of other genders, just the two genders. Also, none of the 22 terms that were cited in the Fifty Seven Bus book, terms that were referring to gender, sex, sexuality, and romantic inclination, were mentioned in other chapters of that book. Now I'll share something that happened to me last night. Someone called me about, uh, this meeting and asked if I, oh, excuse me, called me about this meeting as I was listening to a live sermon online. Those of you who attend church might wonder, what was the text, the main text of that sermon? Well, it was actually from Matthew 18, and I'll paraphrase for the sake of time. It's the chapter where Jesus says whoever offends one of the little children who believe in him, it would be better for that offender to have a millstone hung around his neck, and that he would be drowned in the deep sea. And this text is mentioned in three of the four gospels. Repetition usually means the, uh, topic is given greater emphasis, and one can see that offending children is not looked upon lightly. So the goal of the school district is college readiness and career preparedness. It appears that a thorough review of books needs to be done so that children can concentrate on their studies and on preparedness for their next phase in life. Preschool books have been reviewed. Are the books for grades one through 12 reviewed? Is the public invited to participate in the reviews? There's a grade rating system online that I'd like to mention to you. It's called BookLooks.org. Reviewers can, um, rate book content based on eight categories, and it's age-appropriate and easy to use. Highly recommended. I found it really amazing. We as a community and a country prosper or fail if we don't take personal responsibility about what we think, say, or do. The educational community and the board have a trust bestowed on them to train up children properly. That way, children can learn to make right, age-appropriate decisions for themselves and to help others succeed, and to ensure our society stays prosperous and safe. So please carefully scrutinize the process and resources that are used within the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite Jodi Geenan to the podium, and on deck is Claudia Bussi, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced that name. Uh, Ms. Geenan, it says that you here are, are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Great. You have the next three minutes.
Hello, I'm concerned about the reading programs in our English classes. I spoke last month about the vulgarities and appropriate sexuality and pure propaganda in the book, The Fifty Seven Bus, in hopes that you would remove it from middle school reading lists as well as at the high school. I am pleased to learn that you will be reviewing Policies 361.1, 362, and 381 to see where they might be improved. This will hopefully be a step in the right direction. Please note that under Policy 361, 361.1, our school district is supposed to consult professionally-prepared rubrics, i.e., book and media reviews, and consider the total value, impact, and intent of the author, artist, producer, as well as the reputation of the producer publisher. I would like to know what book and media reviews our school district relies upon when selecting our instructional resources. A few good rating systems and database search engines include BookLooks.org, Meet the Ratings, and Know What You're Getting at MyBookCave.com and PluggedIn.com. In addition, I'm wondering if the book lists were open to public review before the books were purchased, like the preschool literary program currently was. It makes sense that there would be more to worry about regarding content in middle school and high school books than preschool, yet of all the wonderful books in the preschool program, there was one that the reviewers felt needed to be removed from the curriculum. Why not avoid frustrating parents by having a public review before the books are implemented into the curriculum? Moreover, according to the author herself, The Fifty Seven Bus is one of the most banned books for schools in the country. If a proper review had been done, certainly the book and author's reputation would have kept it off of the reading lists. I am also wondering which books were replaced by the inappropriate books. What happened to the enriching and treasured classics such as Anne Frank, Rudyard Kipling's The Jungle Book, Louisa May Elcott's Little Woman, Jack London's The Call of the Wild, Marjorie Rawlings' The Yearling, Madeline LeEngle's A Wrinkle in Time? There are trusted resources from which to gather wholesome educational book lists for grades K through 12 such as Hillsdale Academy. Finally, for those books that aren't removed, please give each book its proper rating and a synopsis on the lists and waivers, including warnings about violence, sexual content, and vulgarity, so that parents have a heads up. Simply giving a permission form with no warnings or ratings is quite meaningless when nearly everything requires a waiver regardless of how safe or unsafe it might be these days. After all, this would help the parents know which books are wholesome and enriching, as well as which ones to avoid due to vulgarity, sexualization, and violence. If you're wondering why any parent would not want their children reading wholesome, enriching books, my response is, aha. Let's build trust through transparency. Your consideration is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we invite Claudia, is it Bussi?
Uh, yes, it is. Thank you.
Absolutely, to the, to the podium. And, uh, Carol Hager will be our fourth and final speaker. So, Ms. Bussi, it says you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yep, and a taxpayer of the Westman School District.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
Okay, thank you. Uh, last month, a number of us did, uh, share some excerpts on the book of The Fifty Seven Bus, and it's used, as I understand, in middle school English classes. And, um, I'm grateful that the school board members have parked the bus and are willing to look under the hood. And as far as a refresher, Sasha's one of the characters in The Fifty Seven Bus, and as I recall, he or she has some difficulty determining her gender, and she arrives at the designation of gender queer, as she's unable to determine if she's masculine or feminine. And it got me to thinking, most teenagers also pursue a rite of passage like a driver's license. And our driver's license indicated for male or female, they don't give us a choice for gender queer. And in doing a little bit of reading on it, it seems to express the fact, if you wanna change your gender, maybe different from your birth certificate, you have to pursue maybe a court order, an affidavit, or perhaps an order from a doctor or a physician, mental health provider. And just that one piece of literature seems to open a door to confusion. And I think we're asking young people to walk through and encounter some areas that they're not quite ready for. Um, a real-life speed bump might involve exposing a child to something like this difference in concern about sexuality. There can be concerns with violence and vulgarity. And it all boils down to, I don't think any of us are asking to ban books. And I would venture to say that gas stoves are gonna be banned well before we ban any sexuality, violence, or vulgarity in books. And the main thing to concern, as the other speakers have mentioned, is that there are yardsticks to be used to measure literature that is used in English class or in book clubs. And one particular title that was mentioned, I believe, is an item in a book club in the high school, the book is titled A Thousand Splendid Suns. And when it's reviewed on a site called Goodreads.com, it states that this particular book is gruesome and emotionally battering. And I think most children and parents, and I as a taxpayer, would appreciate if we had some way of rating books or some kind of warning system to make an informed consent. And I believe that a full disclosure will minimize distrust and build up confidence in our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite, uh, Carol Hager to the podium as our fourth and final speaker. Ms. Hager? Oh, there she is. No worries. It's all right. Take your time. Hey, Ms. Hager, you've indicated you're a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, and taxpayer.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
I have spoken twice before the school board to express concern about the use of The Fifty Seven Bus by Dashka Slater in reading programs or book clubs at Badger Middle School and the high schools. On the high school reading list for the mythology elective is an innocent-sounding book called Norse Mythology by Neil Gaiman. I discovered it's a, actually a graphic novel. I call it a comic book with illustrations. Here's a picture from the book showing a man having sex with a woman. Maybe the district personnel who approved this book thought it was acceptable because it's a drawing, not a photograph. I could have shown you other, let's see, other vulgar pictures, but I don't have time. Another book on the high school reading list is The Kite Runner, a book frequently challenged by parents across the country. The highlights of this piece of so-called literature include profanity, for example, 12 uses of goddamn, prostitution involving minors, and a sexual assault of a minor, and suicide. Here's a passage from pages 66 and 69. Hassan lay with his chest pinned to the ground. Fine, Asif snapped, all I want you weaklings to do is hold him down. Asif knelt behind Hassan, put his hands on Hassan's hips, and lifted his bare buttocks. He kept one hand on Hassan's back and undid his own belt buckle with his free hand. He unzipped his jeans, dropped his underwear. He positioned himself behind Hassan. Hassan didn't struggle, didn't even whimper. I stopped watching, turned away. I pretended I hadn't heard the crack in his voice. Just like I pretended I hadn't seen the dark stain in the seat of his pants, or those tiny drops that fell from between his legs and stained the snow black. According to the district guidelines stated in Policy 361.1, resources like The Kite Runner should meet the following criteria: represent artistic and literary qualities, reflect ideals of society as well as community values, be appropriate to the level of the, the user's maturity, and represent balance and integrity in the presentation of differing viewpoints. I doubt there's any redeeming value in this book that could balance this horrible nauseating rape scene. It makes you wonder who in this school district or on this school board is perfectly fine with approving sexualized content like The Kite Runner, or Norse Mythology, or the LGBTQ indoctrination of The Fifty Seven Bus. As I stated last time, this is not book banning. This is about choosing age-appropriate books for our children in taxpayer-funded public schools. As parents, we have the right to direct our children's upbringing, including making sure their education is free of agendas, bias, and immoral influences. This district's very average proficiency test scores are horrible proof that we're not educating our students so they can achieve success.
Thank you for your comments. That was our fourth and final participant. Appreciate you coming tonight. We'll move to the consent agenda, and on our consent agenda, we have the following items. Minutes of the May 8, 2023, regular board meeting and executive session. Uh, let's see, we have four contracts, three resignations, one retirement, um, and then a compact wheel loader purchase. We also have the Washington County Behavioral Health Grant Acceptance of Funds, which we heard about before, and revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through April 30th of 2023. So I'll pause if there are any questions on the consent agenda. All right, hearing none. I would move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. I'll pause for any final discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. That motion carries. We move on to reports, and our first, our first report is school reports for Fair Park, Silverbrook, and Badger. Dr. Jill Reese, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, is going to kick us off tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight we have three schools presenting, and first we have Tristan Hayes from Fair Park, then we will have Lance Rail and Heather Galdnich from Silverbrook, and then we have Dave Omen and Tyler Woods from Badger.
I brought friends. Some Fair Park teachers are here. I'm so glad they're here. Hello, board. This is our, my second time speaking to the board. There are some new members, so welcome. Um, I'm really excited to give an update on Fair Park Elementary. Um, I'll first start by saying that as we look at this beautiful pyramid that we do build around the district, I just wanna highlight the three layers of the pyramid. The base really talks about how do we make a space where kids want to be, where kids want to be and they feel safe. Building those two has to be a foundational block. It goes into a lot of the training that we do and the environment and culture that we build inside of our schools. Once we feel like we have a place where our students have this feeling of belonging, where their behaviors are in a space where we can be a conducive learning environment, we move up to our teachers. We wanna make us a school in a space where everyone feels included, feels welcomed, feels ready to do their job to the best of their ability. We call it collective efficacy, where we all are on the same ideas together moving forward. We know if those two layers are correct, we move to that top, that pinnacle where we need to spend our time and that student learning. We know that any aspect of this triangle that falls apart really takes away our ability to do our best work to create this beautiful learning community that we're working for. So as we look at this, I'll touch on each of these points. Um, as the colors go up, they kind of denote where our slides go. So if you join me in this journey, uh, the chart that you see with the multicolors on the left is the Wisconsin Forward Exam, and that is given to the entire state. This is where our state report card comes from. It gives each school in the state of Wisconsin a overall number rating. I am very proud of the work that my school has done, that they have put together. Our staff has worked incredibly hard on this. Uh, we are the highest-scoring school in the Westman School District, and I'm incredibly proud of how Fair Park scores and the work that is done. A quick highlight, if you look at that, that's, that right in the middle is last year, or I'm sorry, the year prior. Now, this score is based off of next year. We just took this test. It'll take them a few months to get us results to that. So we won't know how we did this year until this time next year. So it's not a very, it's not good for planning instruction, but it's good for measuring. It's that barometer of where you are. Uh, two things on there, I wanna have overall achievement from that one year to this was 10.7% of overall achievement. We wanna take care, we wanna get rid of yellow, which means basic, below level, and we wanna really drop down that orange. Those are the kids that are really struggling. We wanna increase that purple and increase that blue, and we did in both of those. Our students with, uh, our disabilities was up almost 10%, and our economically disadvantaged subgroup was also up. Now, if you move your eyes over to the other chart that's there, this is the STAR test. We use this and as a universal screener. It really just shakes out kids to give us a better idea of how we're doing in the moment. We take that test three times during the year, and we really are reflective to this data because we can do things with it. It helps us plan our programming. Um, there's lots of things that happens there, but this is what that intentional teaching, this is where we get that kind of instruction that helps us grow. We were really proud of some of the growth that's happened, and I am so thrilled to be able to share, um, how our end-of-the-year data went. We're really, really proud of the work that our teachers put into this. And again, this is for literacy. We're gonna do the same thing with mathematics. Uh, overall achievement in mathematics was up 11.8% for us. Um, and I really wanna highlight, you know, we talked about those times that we shall not talk about. Um, and one of our, our hardest-hit subgroups was our economically disadvantaged students. Um, at Fair Park, that percentage right now is at 44% of our students fit into that subgroup, and that subgroup outpaced the growth of our non-economically disadvantaged students, up over 19% growth in mathematics at Fair Park, another statistic I am incredibly proud of. If you see the difference between the light and the dark on the right-hand side, that shows that we're continuing that trend line as shows that we're continuing that trend line as we continue at Fair Park. Again, another statistic that shows the incredible work and determination of our team. We're continuing to stay agile on the work that we do to be able to commit, working with individuals, and continuing their growth. So as we move up that pyramid, that's our bottom space, we're going to now talk about our teachers. One of the things that really gets to us is we want to have an accurate representation of how our teachers feel. This is the engagement survey that we give to all staff, and the employees answered a question. I was left last year with an unsavory feeling that when we asked, on a scale of 1 to 10, how likely are you to recommend Fair Park as a place to work? In the 2021-22 year, we had 84.8% of people responded with a 7 to 10, and I really challenged my leadership team to think about what levers we could pull to increase this sense of belonging. We know people who are committed to their job, that love what they do, are going to inherently do a better job. You believe in the work that you do, you will make an impact. We had a goal of being up 5%, and we far surpassed it. We were over 10%. 95.6% of employees, that support staff, that certified staff, across the board, rated between 7 and 10 that Fair Park is a place that they would like to work. If you reflect on your own place of business and the work experiences that you've had, to have almost 96% of the employees, 7 to 10, this is a place to work is something that you build with culture, and I am incredibly proud of our staff for. There's a very apt picture of my first-grade team in their crayon outfits. If you feel confident and comfortable enough to dress as a crayon for the day, you must be in a spot where you're feeling well-received. There's also something about fitting in as a crayon, that we can all be different, but still all have an impact and fit together. Incredibly proud of the work and the commitment and the culture of our building. So as we look at the safe and secure place, it's something that we talk a lot about. There are behavior referrals, is how we have. There are major and minor referrals, but anytime that there is a rule or infraction that happens, we record it. Data is important. I'd like to just talk briefly about the small column with the lines on the left. This is the number of referrals per grade level. It tells a lot, but I think the thing I'd really like to focus on it is the two smallest columns, our columns way on the right, that's our fourth and third grade. This shows that the number of just referrals received is our smallest. And what I believe that represents is the longer students are with us, the more that our impact, the more that our teaching, the more that the work that we does impacts their behaviors so that they are mitigated, so that they're fewer. We know when kids are coming into us, they're learning the ropes, they're figuring out where they are, they're figuring out how to fit within our space and system, and as they continue there, it decreases and it goes on. It's not always that way, but that's really what the data and what our reflection on it was this year. Beyond that, the vast majority of our kids have zero referrals, the vast majority. And the ones that don't, we have tremendous supports to help them relearn from behaviors that have happened. One of the things that we've really focused on this year is connections. We know connected kids are more enjoyable, they do their work better, they're more committed to do the things that they know that they need to. We gave a survey to 200 students at our school, which had pictures of everybody that works, or every face they're smiling at, and we asked them, if you had a problem, who is someone you could go to? Who on this list of adults do you trust? And zero. 100% of our students responded with at least one adult, and the vast majority of them had way more. The average number of students selected 15 faces smiling back at them of this person I trust. And I believe that is representative of the culture and the behavioral space that we want to create, and we're going to continue leveraging to help support our student behaviors. My last slide, that's all of us. That is 350 children and 60-some staff that work at Fair Park. There is no one magic lever, there's no certain person. That is our team, and I'm incredibly proud of the work that they do collectively together. Questions?
Questions for Mr. Hayes.
I just have a, could you introduce your wonderful staff here tonight?
All right, we got Luke starting, 4th grade on the end. All right. Okay, good. We got Kate Anderson, also 4th grade, and we have Alyssa Beard, our school counselor.
Great. Chad?
Yeah, what do you think has been making positive changes in the promotion of the culture there? Like, what are some things that you feel have helped?
You know, that's a really great thing. When I was talking with Superintendent Wimmer, she suggested that when I gave this presentation, I listed something specifically, and instead of following her advice, Chad, I chose to omit that from my presentation.
And then I asked you about it anyway.
Let me give you the answers I wrote down on my sheet. How does that sound? So a couple of things that really has happened, and I would say an underlying current is intentional listening. I think we're all so eager to show what we know, but it's the people who spend the time with the kids. Being an intentional listener, we've shifted the way that we provide feedback into this rapid feedback cycle, which instead of watching one instance and being able to say, this is your level of proficiency as a teacher, as a professional, it's now been spread out into these rapid cycles of what are we working on, what do we notice, what do we see? We follow this really great thing of finding, making claims about it, and providing that with evidence to support, and having this whole area of continuous improvement, but it has to be rooted in intentional listening and purposeful growth. I think we look at those things, like, you know, calling out the elephants in the room, being able to have open and honest conversations. As a district, we've really committed to our professional training as a leadership team, providing good feedback, and we've really rolled that into intentional teaching in the professional learning communities, honoring our professional teachers, and then having them learn together, guided by student data, directing towards student learning. I think those, at least right now, really check a lot of boxes where I feel supported by district administration, and we feel we have good buy-in and support of our professional teachers.
Yeah, that's excellent, and I mean, it's just good as we look at best practices, you know, across the board. Anytime you see, you know, a better than 10% improvement in one year, I think that's just something that we should take note of and, you know, share that.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate you sharing that.
Thanks.
Other questions? We appreciate your presentation. Thank you for coming.
Good feedback, Chad. Thank you.
That wasn't planned either, by the way.
Great. Good evening.
We're good.
It is our pleasure to be here tonight to talk about all the good things going on at Silverbrook and things that we're working on. I'm Lance Rell, the principal at Silverbrook, and I brought along Heather Galdenich, our assistant principal. So like Tristan said, the pyramid continues to guide our work. We have three primary focus areas related to our improvement plan indicated on the pyramid. We have customer satisfaction, staff engagement, we have increasing student proficiency, and we have safe and secure addressing ODRs and behavior referrals at our school. So as you might remember, our first goal related to literacy is that we would increase proficiency for 5th and 6th graders by 5% over the course of the year. So we measure that using the STAR, using the Forward Exam, and the STAR exam is our indicator, as Tristan also mentioned. And the big difference between STAR and the Forward Exam is a writing component. So the STAR doesn't assess writing however the Forward Exam does, so that's one little variable in the mix. And on the Forward, students are required to read a passage and write a constructed response. So we work on those things in class, but the STAR doesn't necessarily test those things. And as you can see in both 5th and 6th grade, they've both grown in STAR from fall to winter. In 5th grade, proficiency increased from 35 to 37%, and in 6th grade, it increased from 38 to 43%, and they actually met their end-of-the-year benchmark at mid-year. After the winter results came in, our leadership team decided that we needed to put a new strategy into place that would encourage students to understand their results and help plan for the end of the year. So in the blue text, you can see student goal setting was a new action step that we added. So students not only set goals for themselves on Forward and on STAR, but they received feedback on those goals from their teachers, which is really what beefs up that strategy and makes it so effective for students. They had one-on-one conversations, and those teachers could give them feedback on the goals that they set to make sure that they were rigorous enough to really push that student forward, again, on an individual level. The other actions we shared in fall, we continue to do push and intervention, we continue to have co-teaching going on between classroom teachers and teachers in special education, and we've used our end-of-the-day homeroom time to capture more time for reading and for writing as well. So that's what we've got going on in literacy. I'll turn it over to Heather to talk about math.
Thank you. So for math achievement, our goal would be that our planned actions would assist students in increasing their math proficiency by 5% as measured by the Forward Exam. And you can see we use the STAR data for the number of students scoring advanced in proficiency has grown in 5th grade from 26% in fall to 36% in winter, and our 6th graders growing from 29% in fall to 46% in winter. So just like in the area of literacy, as shared by Lance, the strategies that are in place to help math students are the push and intervention that we talked about in fall, co-teaching continued throughout the year, and a reading and writing emphasis in math class. So students, again, are reading and writing in math class every day. Teachers are instructing students as how to write a math response, and explicitly teaching students how to read, break down, and understand word problems. As Lance talked about, student goal setting was also added as a strategy mid-year in the area of math. And a unique strategy for our 5th grade students was the implementation of a digital tool, DreamBox. DreamBox provides students with independent math practice at their level of need that our students in 5th grade have been using throughout the school year as well. Engagement and customer satisfaction. Each year, the district surveys staff on a variety of engagement questions, and this year, we focused on two of those areas. First, to increase employee input into workplace decisions, and second, to increase the beneficial feedback staff receive on their practice, and both goals were not only met but exceeded this year. Silverbrook also worked strategically to increase family engagement this school year. We developed several action steps based on our family survey, which we had over 200 responses. A family directory was created to connect families with one another coming from the elementary environment into the intermediate school. We also surveyed incoming 5th grade families to see what they wanted to know more about in the transition, and transportation came through loud and clear. So we modified our presentation this year to include representatives of the district as well as RightWay. For our family night this year, we also invited 4th grade students and their families to join us, along with our current 5th and 6th grade students and families, and that event was well-attended, organized by our PTO. 5th grade families were recently invited in to enjoy our students' passion projects and also student writing this year, and last week, our 6th grade families were invited in to participate in the 6th grade poetry slam.
All right, the final area that we'll talk a little bit about is the safe and secure area, student behavior and belongings. So our goal was to increase the percentage of students earning zero or one behavior referral to 82% as indicated by Skyward. And as you can see, the 5th grade has met their goal for this year, and the 6th grade has not. And if you're looking for truth in reporting, this is it. It's not all roses and sunshine sometimes, and this is the stuff that we're working on. So our Tier 2 team continues to meet weekly to review data, implement interventions, and the students in orange and yellow continue to receive a ton of support. We've developed plans and action steps for these students with the help of the Student Services Team, their families, and our staff. And a reminder, we did choose to look at all the data majors and minors when we set this goal, which impacts the data, but we chose it for that reason, because it was And finally, some of the fun things that have happened at Silverbrook this year, working left to right. So for Principal Appreciation Week, there was a dress like Mr. Rell Day. So, yeah, so Liv really went all out to do that. Sorry for her. Second Picture is an event that was sponsored by our PTO this year. So they brought in a group from the Wisconsin Adaptive Sports Association, who took over our FIAED classes for two days and got our kids to experience what it's life, what it's like to experience life in a wheelchair. So they did that during FIAED class, and then there was an event on that Friday night where those folks played staff, and they played students, and they're really good at what they do. The next group of kids are our participants, are our winners in the Delta Kappa Gamma Writing and Illustration Contest for this year. So we had a ton of kids earn first and second place for their books that they wrote, as well as illustrations that they wrote to go along with their books. So those are those guys. We continue to emphasize service at Silverbrook. So these kids were out recently planting some trees at Silverbrook. We planted four trees that day, and we just continue to emphasize just that service piece, which is so important. Bottom left, Liv also was recognized as our Optimist Student of the Month, actually chosen by our entire school to win that award and recognized by the best club in West Bend, the Optimist Club. Center bottom, we have a group of musicians who serenades kids leaving the building each day after school. They're out in the cafeteria, and they're playing their horns and doing that fun stuff just because they want to, which is pretty neat. And then the final picture on the right, it's a little bit cut off, but Battle of the Books is a big deal at Silverbrook. Last year, we had the state champion for Battle of the Books, and this is our, one of the teacher teams who was playing one of the student teams. Though they gave their best effort, they were defeated by the students, but they had a lot of fun doing that. So those are some of the things that we look forward to at Silverbrook and celebrate. So thank you, and take some questions.
All right. Questions?
Just to highlight, like band and orchestra, like, it's unique for our district to offer that at 5th and 6th grade level. How many actually take advantage of that?
So we have performance music starting in 5th grade, which is very unique in the area. So whether it's band, choir, or orchestra, it's performance music. It's, you know, a little higher expectation. So in each of those disciplines, band this year, total, we have about 150 kids, orchestra about 100 and 1/4, and then the rest of the kids do choir. So it is a big deal. It's something we're really proud of, and the district should be proud of, too.
Other questions? We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You got it.
All right.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. On behalf of my assistant principal, Tyler Wood, I'm Dave Ullman, I'm the principal at Badger Middle School, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about the great things happening at Badger Middle School. As a building leadership team, oh, there we go. Thank you. As a building leadership team, we developed some goals and action steps to support the district pyramid, as has been mentioned. Namely, to support safe and secure environment, we set the goal of increasing the percentage of students with one or zero Office referrals by 5%. To support engagement and customer satisfaction, our goal was to increase job satisfaction by 5% as measured by a staff survey. To support student learning, the goal is to increase reading and math proficiency by 5% as measured by the STAR assessment. STAR testing was still in progress at the time of this report, as we're looking at our literacy data, but we witnessed a slight dip in our winter data from the fall. As an ELA department, we decided to narrow our focus to conferring in small groups. Staff has been conferring one-on-one with students weekly in their classes. Conferring looks like a teacher moving around the room to meet students individually, or students going to the teacher's desk. In conferring, teachers support students in goal-setting, reviewing goals, discussing student successes, and addressing student needs as well. It is a valuable one-on-one time for teachers to individualize their teaching for students. Small groups are created to increase student-to-student discourse and allow student choice and select work. Teachers create small groups in a number of different ways, but this does not, this allows teachers to group by need so they can be more focused when working with certain groups. Teachers can rotate around the small groups to help facilitate discussions or deploy mini lessons to, again, address those areas of need. You can see Slide 4 here is our math datum. Our math department really wanted to reimplement and calibrate their practices in CPM, or College Prepared Math, our curriculum. We experienced some gains in math from fall to winter in STAR. We experienced some gains in math from fall to winter in STAR. Staff attributed this fully to fully utilizing the CPM model, which involves a lot of small groups or group work, student-to-student discourse, and team problem solving. Teachers have been using Common Summit of Assessments, which are the bigger tests, so they can compare that data to look for trends and address those ten trends through reteaching and mini lessons. I'll turn it over to Mr. Wood.
Well, good evening. We're really excited to share the update regarding our engagement and customer satisfaction goal. Not only is our goal met, but we exceeded our goal. We had a goal to increase the number of staff members who feel fairly well satisfied with their job from 66.3%. The goal was to increase that by 5%. And in the most recent employee engagement survey, our data showed that 80.8% of our staff feel fairly well satisfied with their job. Some of the strategies we used this year include recognition of staff. There's a staff member of the week nominated by our students. It's announced each Monday morning, as well as promoted on social media. The Staff Sunshine Club has done a nice job of providing celebrations for staff, as well as support in many of their challenging times. And our PTO has organized great recognition opportunities for our staff, as well as coordinated a full week of teacher appreciation earlier this month. Administration spent time meeting with each staff member individually, and an opportunity to check in with them, get feedback on what's going well and where we could improve. And our informal feedback from our staff also suggests that the evaluation process was more meaningful for them as well. And finally, I'm sure the highlight of the year for all of our staff members was the, when the administration gave a personal rendition of happy birthday to the staff members with the personal delivery of their birthday card. When it comes to our safe and secure goal, even though our goal was not met, we did increase and improve from last year. We have a staff that holds our students to high expectations, and having about 850 12- to 14-year-olds all together in a building will have its ups and downs. Our goal was 85% of our students with zero-to-one major office referrals, and as of last week's data, the column on the left shows we're currently at 81.4% of our students meeting our behavioral expectations on a daily basis all year long. And based on the request, on your request from our last presentation, we also created a chart on the right, which shows the number of referrals broken down by majors in the left column and minors in the right column. Keep in mind, majors are the office or administrator handled behaviors, and the minors are considered to be handled at the classroom level by the teacher. The gray taller column shows either all majors or all minor referrals this year, while the red shorter column shows the majors or minors with the attendance-type referrals removed. So that would be our tardy-to-class, skipped-class, truancy-type referrals. So as you can see, when attendance-type referrals are removed, there are approximately 800 less major referrals and approximately 1,500 less minor referrals. So as we look into next year, we'd like to build off the momentum we had this year. We began the year with a comprehensive reboot of Badger Pride, our expectations. We had great feedback moving in to start the year, and we're looking to do more along those lines next year, but on a more monthly basis to maintain the momentum and bring the focus back around, around specific behaviors that we're seeing. This year, we were, we also communicated our data with our staff and identified areas to focus for our behaviors with tips, reminders, strategies through our staff memos and newsletters. And looking into next year, we'd like to better engage families with this type of information and create a partnership with the families to help reinforce positive behaviors in our school and throughout the community.
And then finally, the fun stuff, right? So on our left is a picture of students with a therapy dog from Dogs in Motion during Mental Health Awareness Week. The upper picture in the middle there is our renowned fishing club run by Mr. Chamberlain and Mr. Lasowski. They take the kids to the Girl Scout camp in Silver Lake to fish. Tomorrow is the culmination of that, where they'll actually have, be on some, a couple of pontoon boats donated by residents of Silver Lake, and the kids will get to fish off the pontoon boat. So it's kind of something neat for them as well. The lower-middle picture is a picture of our students at a college visit this year. On the right is a picture of Joey with Riggs. Riggs is also a therapy dog that resides in the Ullman household, and I would like it very clearly noted, please, Mr. Harder, the video's on, right, that Riggs, all the credit for Riggs goes to Mrs. Ullman. I just want that known, so. So that's it. Do you have any questions for us?
Questions? John?
I just have one. Have we identified the reason for the dip in literacy?
We have not identified the reason, one particular reason for the dip. That's why we narrowed our focus. John, I think, I think our focus was too wide. We're implementing, we had a new framework, this workshop framework, and we're implementing a new curriculum along with it. And I think it was a lot, and we were trying to do everything at once, and that's why we really tried to focus on that, the one, the conferring, really the one-to-one, especially with the goal setting, really looking at what the kids need. And then also, the small groups are extremely powerful, too, because it gets them working in kind of natural work settings with a couple other kids, and we do that for a variety of reasons as well.
And then to follow up, have, have you noticed if there was, or been able to identify a floor-by-floor, if there was a dip? I know there's, you know, different floors or kind of different group of kids. And is it specific to, you know, a third-floor thing or a first-floor thing?
Right. That's a good question. So the way we have it set up right now, it's not, kids are what we call cross-housed. We try and keep them in the same pod of five teachers, but it's not real clean with our scheduling model right now. So kids will go to different literacy teachers. So we do have a lot of cross-housing, but no, it wasn't concentrated to one floor. It was more so an overall trend.
Okay. And then in those small groups, do we do, like, out loud reading with the kids? Do they, do they do it, like, you know, for each other? They read a passage or something? Because obviously, that's always been a, you know, a huge help for anybody to hear themselves reading.
Yeah, more so the conferring, the one-on-one. If they, if that, if that's the particular need for a student, the teacher will do that one-on-one. And then again, if it's the need, if they break them up by, by strengths and deficiencies, some of them will be the read aloud portion of it. So in some cases, yes, that happens.
Thanks, John. Other questions, observations? Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for coming tonight. All right, yeah. Thank you to all of our principals and APs. Appreciate it. Our next report is our Curriculum Committee report, and Melanie Ergot, our committee chair, will give us that report. Melanie?
All right. So the curriculum committee met on May 16th. We had a presentation on the Seal of Biliteracy, and this is a state-approved student credential administered by local school districts to recognize students who have attained proficiency in English and one or more additional languages by high school graduation through studying a world language and/or a home language, kids that maybe come from, you know, a family that speaks Spanish at home. And this credential would be available to encourage students to continue their study of a foreign language through grade 12. And the cost to the district would be very minimal. It would just be for the proficiency tests that the students would need to take, which, you know, I think it was like $20 for Spanish, or maybe a little bit more if it was a language that's not as common to the area. But, and then we got a proposal, or a proposal for the high school FIAED course review and revisions. And this proposal will come to the board for a discussion on the June 5th meeting. And Tim Harder provided an update on the CTE department. There's going to be a three-year program of study analysis plan that was presented. Just looking forward and analyzing each class, and is there a need for that? Is it supporting the businesses in the area? And then Dr. Wimmer, she reviewed some of the policies in the 300 series, which we will be discussing later on, on the agenda today. And then it was determined that I will continue to serve as the Curriculum Committee Chair for the next year, and a meeting is scheduled, or the meeting schedule will be determined at our next curriculum meeting on June 20th.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Melanie? Appreciate your recap. We turn then to our superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer?
Yes. One piece that just came up a couple days ago, so I wanted to foreshadow, we're going to be asking for an action item on the agenda for June 5th. Generally, we do discussion and then action, but it will be seeking approval for an out-of-state travel for one high school student to compete in a national debate final. So that's just a shortened timeframe. It just came about a couple days ago. So again, we'll, we'll get you that information so that you're prepared for action on June 5th. So I just wanted to foreshadow that this evening. Congratulations to several of our students and staff. The Downtown West Bend Association's Art Walk banner, they will adorn the light poles on Sixth Avenue along Downtown West Bend this summer. Several will have award-winning paintings from our students, as well as a staff member. So the first-place winner for the adult category is Miranda Kemp, a former West Bend School District student and current employee of the school district. So congratulations to her. In addition, West Junior Grace Melstrand is the winner of the student contest. Also, East Junior Kayla Singh-Coffer was second. West Senior Mackenzie Endlich earned honorable mention, and West Junior Eleanor Hunt also earned honorable mention. So congratulations to those students. Also, two teams of students from East and West High School qualified for the Wisconsin Civics Games, and one came away the big winner. The winning team was made up of Owen Damcott, a West Junior, Danny Zop, an East Junior, Abby Lachrum, a West Senior, Maya Latour, a West Junior. Each member of this team wins $2,000 scholarship to a Wisconsin college or university of their choice. It was amazing. I think the contest has been in existence for just three years now. We've placed highly. So for the team to take first, and again, a $2,000 scholarship is a pretty amazing accomplishment. And a thank you to Social Studies teacher, Mark Drake. He advises the teams in their competition. So we're excited for them. Just some important dates for our public to remember. Thursday, June 8th is the last day of school for all students. June 9th, we'll follow that up with a professional day for all staff. Again, no student school that day. And then we'll culminate the year with graduation Sunday, June 11th. West High School kicking off at 1:00 PM, East High School at 4:30, both in the fieldhouse. So check those out. And then just a shout-out to West Softball. They were the 2023 North Shore Conference Champions with a 19 and 4 record. I think that's the first time they've brought that home since, like, 1990. So that was an amazing accomplishment. And both the West and East baseball teams have a chance to win the conference, depending on the results of games that they're holding this week. And all of our spring high school sports will compete in their respective regionals and sectionals both this week and next. So we wish them all luck in representing their schools. So that is all I had tonight.
Thank you. Other items or questions for Superintendent Wimmer? Well, I have one, because Superintendent Wimmer, I'm concerned that you didn't talk about a certain achievement that you recently completed. So just to...
Well, thanks. I think we're celebrating my own graduation, which was this weekend. So you're right, I did earn my doctorate over the weekend. I thank you for that. Although I did say, I said, ah, anyone can be a doctor. Only one of us can be the superintendent. So, but thank you for that. It was quite an accomplishment. You know, I know exactly how our high school students feel with a lot of persistence and the stress of presenting and all of that. So a lot of empathy for our students at this time of year. Thank you for that.
Sure. Well, it's a remarkable achievement. Congratulations, and our district is the beneficiary of your added skills. So thank you. Well done. All right, we move to our discussion items, and our first discussion item relates to safety and the use of portable metal detectors. And I believe Tim Harder, our Director of Technologies, Libraries, and I was looking at this, and Career and Technical Education, as well as Dave Ross, our Director of Facilities, are going to walk through this topic. John, my good evening.
You go ahead. All right. So, good evening, Board members. Dave and I were asked to look in, one of the Board members had asked about the viability or the ability to purchase hand-wand scanning metal detectors, and what that would mean for the district if we brought them in and use them. And so Dave, we both worked our avenues, talking to a few other districts, looking at board policies, what equipment is out there, and recommendations of equipment, and how that would be utilized for our staff, also in conjunction with our police liaisons here. Often, when we get to the point where we're having a conversation about searching a student, our police liaisons are a big part of that piece. And so having conversations with our police department. Dave and I were able to do a little background work on that and cost, some policy pieces and so forth. And you can see in our board docs right up tonight, our first recommendation that this would actually be brought to Board Policy Committee, so that we could have a conversation about some policy updates, a potential administrative rule that would go with that, and then the development of a training plan and rollout as we start the school year in fall, if that's something the Board would like to continue to go forward with as we move forward. So either of you can fill in anything that I missed in our conversations.
I think you pretty much covered that portion of the discussion. One of the other things that we've been working on is we had talked earlier about trying to find a way to better segment the high school for when events are going on there, and we have a lot of people in the building, and sometimes people in parts of the building that they're not supposed to be in. So right now, that is with an architect, and is actually undergoing a code review at this stage of the game. So we'll be coming forward with some recommendations in the not-too-distant future.
Questions?
So by talking with the other districts and stuff, you were saying that other districts are using the hand wands, correct?
There are some. Sometimes they're in conjunction with their police liaisons. They're often used as a secondary tool to a search that's already done by a police officer. In those cases, even talking to our own police department here, it doesn't replace the proper search that they are, they're going to go through if a police officer would use that. There are some who use it as a, as a resort or a scanning. And the question really becomes through, if I scan Dave and Dave alerts, what are really my next steps, other than saying, okay, Dave, empty your pockets? Or are you alerted there? We are limited in how far we can go. So as an officer, without taking somebody into custody, and I don't want to misspeak on their side of what they can and cannot do, but there are districts that use metal detectors for a variety of reasons, some for entering events, some for, you know, individual scanning or checking on students as part of a search. Just our belief in reading what other districts have done with that is, is we would want to make sure that we have the policy and the processes in place for the legal aspects of rolling that out, being that we're two to three weeks from the end of the school year, making sure that all of our staff who would use this, our administration is aware of that. But there are districts who use metal detectors and have for a while for a variety of reasons.
Yeah, because I, I mean, just personal experience, I've heard from staff and students of the concerns of students in the bathroom, you know, with a vape or whatever, and they come out, somebody says, I want to, I want to search you. If they comply, and they pull their pockets out, but they stuffed it down their pants, you can't find that, but a wand might pick it up and might say, oh, well, what is this? If you, if you're not willing to do that, then we can only assume the worst. Same with, same goes with how staff is reacting to students going to their cars that don't have passes, come back in. According to what I've heard, the procedure is to, those students are to be searched, because you have no idea what they were doing in their cars. If you, if they're coming in and they're not being searched properly, you know, or they think, oh, I can just, I can just hide this wherever, you know, we need, we need to follow the procedures. And if we don't, then we need, and if the officers aren't going to use what they're, the tools that they have, then we need to get the tools ourselves. And that's where, you know, I'm the one that asks for the wands, and I want, I want better security for this. The students want better security. The staff want better ways to find the stuff, because if we don't get the stuff out of the school, you know, we're just going to continue to, you know, have the issues growing and growing as we, as we move on, and it's just never going to, it's never going to end. I mean, I've also heard of reports that their students partying in the, in the ceiling tiles. I mean, wrappers and all kinds of stuff up there. I mean, this is an issue. You know, we're not catching this stuff, and they're running wild there. And it's just, it's insane. So I, I mean, I'm all on board with however we can, we can make sure that these students know that they're not in charge here, and that there will be repercussions for these things. And if they don't want to comply with a search according to Policy 446, then, then we need to have written disciplinary actions of what's going to take place if they don't want to be searched, because they, there can only be one assumption then. You don't want to be searched, then, then we can assume one thing, that you're in the wrong. You know, and, and then, yes, we need to have law enforcement come. Tickets need to be written. We need to stop being relaxed on this garbage. I mean, you know, that's my input.
Other thoughts? I feel like you folks have done a lot of research, because it sounds like you're ready to present out to the Board. So I feel like we should give you an avenue to do that. So my thought is that, we talked about Policy Committee. I think that would be a great place to start, because I agree, I think, if we were to put something like that in action, I do have a lot of questions as to how we would, how we would do that, you know, and I'm not, I'm not an expert in constitutional law, but as a, we're, we're an extension of the government, and so all those governmental restrictions apply. And so other districts may have made this work, and so I think we just need to learn more. And so I think we need the, need to hear the benefit of what you've, what you've looked at. So that'd be my thought. So that'd be my thought.
Yeah, and Chris, to your point, some of the districts that have policies around metal detectors, they are pages long. They are down to the description of how many staff are there. So it's Dave and Tim, and this is what happens if there's an alert or a kid, like, that's the pieces we don't have in play to hand out if we were to go forward with this. So we just want to make sure we hit those legal pieces and use what other districts have already put forth as we go to potentially policy with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be beneficial to understand, all right, we, we start with the purchase of wands, but then there's a whole bunch of other stuff. So what is that whole basket of everything we would need to do? What would that look like? That'd be good to know.
So currently, we, we pull the students aside to be searched right now, as far as I understand the policy. We don't, we don't do it in front of other students or staff, whatever. So I mean, obviously, if we do move forward, we would have to obviously look into a potential, I mean, just for records sake, I don't know if you can even do a recording to make sure that everyone is compliant with stuff and, you know, like a...
Nope, not necessarily. So what we would do is, we have a Policy Committee meeting tomorrow. We already have that agenda, but on the 30th, we have that. Again, part of their exploration was to grab model policy, all of those, and look at all those pieces. So that's the work that we would put on our agenda. I would propose for the 30th of May, when we meet, to go through all that and then come up with a continuum. Because you'll see anything from a handheld wand and intermittent use upon suspicion, right? That's one piece. And then the continuum goes all the way towards, there's just automatic ad-entry and everyone gets scanned, right? So we just need to figure out where, where do we want? Is it just this upon suspicion? Is it some intermittent checking that we want to do? Where do we want to do? So we'll bring forward policy language kind of around that entire continuum and flesh that out together and then bring that forward to the full Board.
Other thoughts, comments, questions? Appreciate your investigation. Thank you. All right, we are then on to facility analysis and architect selection process. And Mr. Ross, thank you for staying at the podium.
Oh, you're welcome. Prior, I believe, to this Board taking their seats, I believe the Superintendent made reference that the district was going to go out for an RFP for the selection of an architect in case any potential referendum might come to the forefront. The RFP went out to four of the big architectural firms in the area. And we, they're so busy right now. I was actually kind of surprised. We got two responses back. And what we would, are proposing is that administratively, next week, that we set up some interviews with those firms to determine the best fit going forward and then bring it back to the Board for final recommendation. So again, just a process piece. We're going to have to decide exactly where we're headed in the not-too-distant future. That seems like, you know, any election might be a long way away, but with the amount of work that needs to be done, it actually is kind of right around the corner, so.
Great, so the idea would be we would hear an update at the June 5 meeting? Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. Any questions? All right, we appreciate the update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to discussion of various policies in the 300 series, 330, 361.1, 362, and 381. And Superintendent Wimmer?
Yes. This is the discussion that we had at Curriculum the other day. We've heard a lot from our public around checks and balances, material selection, all of those. So taking another critical look at the policies that guide us through those pieces. And then we also have that on our agenda tomorrow through policy. So having cleared that, I'm going to invite any member of Curriculum Instruction to chime in around that as well as the full Board. The first policy, 330, the Standards-Aligned Goal-Based Curriculum Development and the accompanying administrative rule talks about the process in which we go about adopting standards, working on curriculum development, and just continuous improvement, that that's that cycle that we talk about. In our discussion, there's a solid process. It invites, again, wanting to be transparent with the community, those pieces being out there. We talked about things, not in policy, but things that we've done and have that expectation we could put in the administrative rule around, you know, placing items at the library and making sure that people can see them as well. So as far as process, there were no procedural recommendations around that. We did recommend a title change, and then there's one typo in that, just to make sure, I know we talk about it a lot in policy, that our policy is written for a much wider audience than just educators who are using it. It's written for the public. The title of this policy does not lead you to understand that it's about how you develop curriculum and have a process of improvement. So we would want to just streamline that title. So it just really succinctly states curriculum development. Any pieces from the committee? Any, any thoughts from anyone else on that one? Again, that's the process by which you have a cycle. It goes before your Board, what you're going to look at, how you're going to look at, what guides that process. And that's just more the cycle of review.
So I'm sure you get to this toward, toward the end, but if there are changes to these or title changes, that then goes to Policy Committee to look at and then to the, to the Board?
Correct. These appear on the Policy Committee's agenda for tomorrow, actually.
Yeah. Thank you.
The next one is 361.1 Instructional Resources, that selection. In there, we had a lot of the same conversations around what do things really mean? Specifically in the fourth bullet where it says, what's appropriate? So appropriate by whose measuring stick, right? We kind of heard that tonight even around that. You know, where is that? So we had really good discussion around the work in actually Human Growth and Development being something that could create that yardstick for us. Because that's curriculum and concepts that are really vetted by the community and are representative of the community values, and it's fully approved. So we're talking about taking a look at that through that lens. So when we hear about things that have sexual content, when we have that, it's really creating firm boundaries around what that would be, where that would come into play. So we talked about all of those really being clearly defined and having clear expectations around the word appropriate, profanity, what that is, where that yardstick is, any sexual content of any, any of those pieces. And, and really kind of setting that more tightly and clearly for ourselves and for our public. Any committee members, any thing to add for that discussion?
Yeah. So like I had mentioned, the vulgar language and the sexual content was, were the big topics for me. Another thing that had come to mind since our conversation is like the use of underage drinking and drugs. I feel like that's probably not really appropriate. As for like where to set the bar, you know, like where do we, how do we determine what is considered vulgar language or what is considered, you know, inappropriate sexual content? What about something like, I'm sure there's like a student code of contact, right, or conduct? Like what language would be appropriate for the hallway at school, right? Is there, is there something written like that? Like, so maybe books that don't fall into that category would probably not be appropriate because you wouldn't want to be reading that out loud in a classroom as it would be inappropriate, right? And then the same thing for like, like the sexual content, right? Like what would kids, what would be appropriate for students that were maybe in a romantic relationship in the hallway, right? You're not going to be doing a bunch of sexual stuff in front of your peers. I mean, I'm sure people probably do things that aren't appropriate, right? But what would be in the code of conduct for students?
Yeah, and same thing. I think we looked at kind of what or where could we seek alignment? To your point, looking at some of those other pieces to draw that in a manner. And then we also talked, not specifically around this policy, but around the, the last one around controversial issues. We just talked about utilizing the website revamp that's planned because right now, there's a barrier to access for information, the depth of information around those things. Already, Dr. Reese's department has put in place an expanded book list that are going out. There's that expansion of what is this instead of just the title? What is that? So they're working on that. Those are already going out the door right now. So we haven't paused or waited on getting that information. But I think when we get to that, one of the pieces that we talked about a lot was that accessibility, transparency, and that knowledge for parents who are making choices around things as well as our community as a whole. So again, that transparency and trust that we heard about too. So there's some revamps planned there and just aligning that. And we talked a lot about kind of it coming back to the Policy Committee because taking all these thoughts and kind of getting the legalese, the templates, all of that, so that we would work in to create that kind of legal language around the vision of the intention. And it'll still have to go back to the Curriculum Committee to, to do those pieces and that work. So with that, we had the others around...
I had something to add to this one before we move on.
Yeah.
Just, just with the public comment over the last, you know, few meetings and stuff regarding this book, Kite Runner, the 57 bus and the Norfo, whatever that, the other one was with inappropriate images. According to, you know, this policy, the way I'd read it is, is they are not appropriate for the age of students. And I would say if we're not following policy to get those books in place, then I would say we need to put them on pause and pull them out until we can further review them immediately.
So are you asking for reconsideration to go into that process? That's a process where when you pull out like that, that's a reconsideration process? Or you're asking for those to be formally reconsidered for use in the district?
Well, according to these, according to our own policies, we didn't follow our own guidelines for those books. It doesn't appear. From what she, from what we were presented tonight, those are not appropriate for the age according to the, the sexual content in there, the graphic pictures, the graphic written novel portions of it of, you know, the, the rape scenes and things like that. That's not appropriate for any age student, if you ask me. And, you know, by these guidelines, we're not following the, the policy to actually get those books implemented in the first place. So I, I don't know how they would even pertain to, to an educational foundation like, like this and, and a learning environment that they don't actually, they don't actually follow the procedures or the policies anyways. So I, yeah, I would like to see them pulled out.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to add, you know, like reading, like when, when Mrs. Hager read the section from The Kite Runner, when you're reading, like you picture everything in your mind, you know what I mean? And so I know everybody in this room saw that picture in their mind when she was reading that. And so basically, you know, that is like, that's like pornography, you know? And it's totally inappropriate. Students are not of legal age to even consent to sex, so I just think it doesn't belong at all in any student environment. Besides human growth and development, obviously.
I think it's going to be interesting as we move forward when we talk about, you know, what's the right test or the yardstick to do? Because I think generally speaking, we've got two choices. One is, we're going to try to do our absolute best to put a test down in words that is so clear that everyone's going to be able to enforce it without, you know, without variation. That is very close to impossible. But we, but that doesn't mean that we can't try or we can't do our best. I think part of it is, when I think of Human Growth and Development, part of the success of that program is that we put people in place to get a variety of perspectives. Because what someone considered to be offensive 50 years ago is not necessarily offensive today or vice versa. So I'm going to be interested just to see how we can evolve that because I think it's likely going to be a combination of the two. And others may have other thoughts, but either we've got to try to describe in words exactly what fits and what doesn't fit. I think, Melanie, I think you had a bunch of really good suggestions. It's, it's tough to anticipate all circumstances and all tests in words.
It was, it was interesting. It was actually, Tim, you know, he's connected with the library media and all of that, and he was, they were talking about, you're starting to see publishers be sensitive to that and actually put a little bit more information. We, we talked a lot about, you know, movies have a rating, you know, other songs have a rating, or just really talking about what content you can expect to find there. And we just talked about that piece, book. So right now, we're developing that on our own to get that information, but we, you know, you can see where publishers are starting to, maybe to jump on board and do that as well. So, you know, it's certainly something that we're not facing alone. I think everyone is questioning those pieces, so.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a challenge. I mean, as I was kind of researching some of these books, I had discovered that there isn't a rating system for books like there are for movies, you know? So without somebody actually sitting and reading through or being able to find the content online of what's in these books, it's difficult to know. So I think it's really an uphill battle.
And you don't want it to be work. So we talked about kind of using that website transformation around to go as in-depth and having resources there so it's not dependent on kind of that one time I might be reading, but what is going to be there ongoing and accessible all the time? You know, because it might be a resource even, you know, throughout the summer. Maybe they're looking at the library, all of those, you know, any way we can serve our families, I think is important. One of the pieces, in addition to the material selection, we did talk about updating the language in 362, the material selection around the school library and media, and also teasing out that point. Right now nestled within that is that process for reconsideration. And again, if you were someone from community or someone looking for that specifically, it was kind of embedded within. So I'll bring forward some language that teases out, that updates the library media, and then keeps that kind of reconsideration piece separate. So we, we had talked about that, again, making it more accessible, understandable for a reader. So I'll bring that forward as part of our policy work too.
John, would you mind? I'm just trying to follow along with what, what part of the policy were you referring to that were in violation of, that you believe were in violation of? I just want to, I just, I'm not seeing where that, I just want to add.
Yeah, the overall appropriateness of material relative to the intended student audience, i.e. relative to anticipated range of age, skills, cognitive maturity of the students who are most likely to be using materials. That's the main one.
Are you on 361?
It's 361.1.
Yep.
It's the fourth bullet point. I think the question was, who determines what's appropriate?
Right, that, that's what I was asking. And that's what I'm asking because I, well, I understand from your perspective, you know, where you're coming from, and I don't disagree with that necessarily, but I think that's, that's the bigger question is, you know, who, who are we using as the determiner of appropriateness? And I think going forward, that's why parental involvement will be more crucial because that's going to vary by person.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, if, if, if I was to think, is this appropriate for my kid? And I got a seventh, seventh grader, eighth grader, would I be, would I be comfortable with my kid reading those passages from that book in a, you know, to their grandparents? Absolutely not.
Sure. But another parent might be fine with it and for different reasons.
Yeah, and then, and then I guess we get into the controversial issue then. You know, what's, what's appropriate for you is not appropriate for me? And then, then we're in violation again. So we can, we can...
Well, it's a good, you know, it is a good question. This is, I think, what we were talking about before when we say appropriateness or controversial, who's the judge? You know, that's what we've got to, we have to be, we have to give guidance. In order to set up our administration for success, we need to give them guidance. That's what we need to give them guidance on. And it's not going to be easy, but that doesn't mean we can't, we shouldn't do it or we shouldn't try.
And again, this will be coming forward. This was certainly that first discussion for Curriculum Committee. We've got a Policy Committee tomorrow with this on the agenda. If you're not on any of those committees or you have kind of thoughts outside of that come to you or you reviewed a little bit deeper, just let me know so I can convey those as we kind of go deep into this work.
And I just, did we get to 362 yet? Or can I just add?
Yep.
That's the selection of school library material. And I guess I would like to also see maybe another point under that that is parallel to the curriculum with the overall appropriateness of the material. So whatever we end up coming up with for the standard curriculum, I'd like to see that on the library sheet as well.
We actually talked post-curricular meeting around having kind of one overarching that was really consistent and had that same bar. And then are those kind of places where you find materials nestled underneath? So we're playing around with that format exactly.
You know, and this school, the material selection policy, it's interesting because we have the policy on controversial issues, the idea to avoid those. Yet point four says, we actually are to provide materials on opposing sides of controversial issues.
Yeah, it's a lot of...
And there you are. Right? So those are the, that, that judgment around what a controversial issue is and who is the judge becomes important.
So again, if anyone has any thoughts, questions... So again, if anyone has any thoughts, questions outside of the meeting, just feel free to connect. We'll bring that work forward, it'll go through policy, and then we'll bring our work back to curriculum as well as the full board, as we all stay engaged in the conversations.
Great, and thank you to the curriculum committee for taking us, taking the first steps on this journey for us. Appreciate it very much. Other questions, thoughts, before we move on? All right, we're onto action items. First action item is out-of-state travel for Skills USA. I think Mr. Harder is here to answer any questions that we might, that we might have.
These were prior discussion items, so, yep, nothing new.
No, no additional information? All right.
Unless you have specific questions.
Great. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I would make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel for Skills USA as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds all around, we'll give that one to Melanie. Motion and second to approve out-of-state travel for Skills USA as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Next is our Spanish out-of-country trip. Is there any additional information to present?
Correct.
Any questions from the board? Chad?
Actually, there was a question on that trip about whether or not graduated students would be, would have an opportunity, and.
Correct, they cannot. We, we don't have any jurisdiction authorization, liability wise.
Not a waiver that can be signed or anything like that.
What we could do is work with them, I believe it's the Cedarburg School District, they actually work with Parks and Rec to do, and do a trip kind of not connected with the school district. We can walk them through kind of what that model might look like. I haven't had any conversations with our Parks and Rec about it yet. But that way, students could have access, but maybe not under that umbrella.
I just hadn't heard follow-up.
Yep.
Oh, thanks, Chad, that's a good reminder. Any other questions on the Spanish out-of-country trip? Hearing none, I would move to approve the Spanish out-of-country trip as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kelly. We have a motion and second to approve the Spanish out-of-country trip as presented. Final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion carries. We moved to physical education K-2 fitness. Any additional information?
Do you have additional information? Yeah, okay.
Great. Great, so there are schedules included in board docs? Dr. Reese, why don't you come to the podium, we'll.
The question was around, so if we're adding more time to this, where were we getting time from? What would that load look like for the teacher? And what did classroom schedule look like for students? So those were provided.
Excellent.
So this is, these are samples from Decorah, actually. So this is what there's, what they call their specialist schedule. So this is a schedule that shows PE, art, and music in their schedule. And if, there's a little code on the bottom that has the grade levels and the teacher names, so you can kind of see where people are plugged into that. And this includes that additional K-2 fitness piece. If you look particularly, it's easy to see on Friday, because there's like those doubled-up classes, and that's what happens with K-2 fitness when it goes into the schedule.
And then there's also a sample classroom schedule, because that was the piece around, so where does time come from?
Right, so then this is a sample of a kindergarten schedule for the day, that kind of looks, walks through what that looks like.
Okay, we appreciate the supplementary information. Questions from the board?
So does that class just fit into the specials section on that schedule?
Correct.
I move to approve the physical education K-2 fitness as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. Motion and second to approve the physical education K-2 fitness as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now on to our board organization. This is the time of year where we reorganize ourselves as a board, and I believe Superintendent Wimmer, you are going to walk us through this process.
Yeah, so we foreshadowed this prior and had some preliminary discussions, so we'll just formalize that for reorganization. The officer terms are for a year in that. So we go in order of office, so the first being president. So are there any nominations for president? You can also self-nominate, too, but any nominations for president?
I'd like to nominate Chris for president.
And Chris, would you accept that nomination?
I accept the nomination, and encourage others to throw their hat in the ring if they'd like to, but thank you. I accept the nomination.
Are there any, anyone else who would like to be the president for the coming year? So generally, in process, we can take both voice vote as well as secret ballot. We generally do a ballot if there's competition for the office. So if you're okay as a team in doing this, we can do a voice vote for this. We have a nomination for Chris Reigert as president for the board for the coming year. Do you have a second on that?
A second.
Thank you. Nomination from one, a second and an acceptance. And then I, in Chris's absence, I would just ask all those in favor of that nomination.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? Good, then he can get the other voting after this. The next position is vice president. So we'll go in order at our last meeting, not our last one, the one prior. John, you had expressed some initial interest in vice president. Is there a nomination for John? Again, you can self-nominate, or anyone else expressing interest, so.
I will nominate John.
Thank you.
And I also would be interested.
So, okay, so we have two interested. John, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. Kelly, you've self-nominated, so you are also interested. And that puts us in a position, so do I have a second for each of the two nominations?
I second Kelly's nomination.
Okay.
I'll second John's nomination.
Thank you. Okay. This was the time last year where I had to go to the audience and get paper, and prepare this year. So what you will do is, in the event of two people seeking a position, we will actually have a ballot vote. It is the one time that a board can do a secret ballot, so you do not have to put your name on that. I'd ask you to just, I'll take that, I'll actually mix them up, but everyone will be able to choose between John or Kelly for that nomination.
We'll just vote with first name?
Yep, that's fine, I'll know exactly who you mean.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Give me a moment, and then I will collect. You can do it however you want.
Superintendent Wimmer, you'll tally the ballots?
Yep, I'm going to, yep. I know, right? At least I have paper this year. I'm gonna ask you to verify that I have seven votes. In looking at the votes, Kelly has received the most votes for that. I'll ask you to verify. So Kelly would serve as vice president. Thank you for that verification from our clerk. So Kelly would assume the office of the vice president. The next piece that we'll look at is the treasurer. In our last conversations, Kurt had expressed that he was willing to continue as treasurer in that position. So again, any nominations for anyone? Kurt, you can nominate yourself, anyone can nominate Kurt, or anyone else who would like to go for that position.
I'll nominate Kurt.
Okay.
I would second the nomination.
Anyone else? For treasurer? Okay, then we would proceed, I have a nomination. Kurt, are you accepting of that nomination?
Yes, I am.
Okay. We have a nomination, a second, and an acceptance. All those in favor, is Kurt continuing as treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Kurt would continue as treasurer. In the role of clerk, we've had Melanie serving as interim clerk since Tony vacated that position. In looking at the role of clerk, we had discussed Melanie had initially expressed interest in continuing that position. Do I have a nomination for anyone for the position of clerk?
I would nominate Melanie for clerk.
I'll second her.
Anyone else interested in the position of clerk? Then I would ask, all those in favor of Melanie as, serving as clerk for the coming year, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then Melanie would continue to serve as clerk for us. The last role, only unified high schools need to vote specifically, but just calling attention to the secretary position. Secretaries are the actual administrative assistants to the superintendent, who serve as a board secretary for you. It's not a formalized role as an officer, but I just thought it would be nice to call that out. So in looking at officer roles at our next, we'll kind of recombobulate and move forward with the new positions, assuming at the next meeting. Any questions about process? Great, thank you for that.
All right, thank you for walking us through that. We're now on to, now that we have a board, board seated, on to committee and delegate assignments.
Correct, there's certain delegate assignments, committee assignments, that we do take care of annually. So the first one was the Cooperative Educational Service Agency, we're part of CISA VI, it's their Board of Controls. They do have a board convention that would be in June. John, you had spoken, you had serviced, previously served as that, but kind of questioned, you know, if someone else would want to take that for the coming year. So are you interested in continuing?
I'm not.
Giving that, is anyone interested in doing that? You could certainly talk with John around his experience in that, but they specifically look for representation at that annual meeting with that date there. So we, we need a representative of the district to serve there.
I think that would work for my schedule. I'll volunteer for that.
Okay.
If I'm wrong about my schedule, I may be coming back.
That's fine. All right, so with looking at that, is anyone opposed to Chris serving as that representative? It's not a formal position we need to vote on, we're just seeking representation. Thank you for that. The next is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. We have convention attendance in January. We seek a delegate and an alternate. Again, the delegate has to, we pre-meet in December on resolutions, and then the delegate goes into that meeting to represent the board, based on our prior discussion on different motions and votes and things like that. Is there anyone interested in serving as the delegate for that? June, you're interested in serving as the delegate for that? Anyone else interested in being the delegate? Anyone willing to be June's alternate, should something occur and she couldn't make it?
I can be the alternate.
Thank you. Anyone else interested in being an alternate? Great. And again, we go through, when WASB releases their resolutions, we'll go that, go through all that together, and that will actually direct June or Kelly in their actions in that meeting. And the next is on the Head Start Committee, just formally serving. We are one of the few districts who actually runs our own Head Start. I know, Melanie, we've had previous conversation with your background and experience, being able to serve on that committee. Is there anyone, in addition to Melanie, expressing interest to be the Head Start representative from the board?
And you're willing, Melanie?
Very good. Thank you, that's wonderful. We had previous discussions, so that we could convene our committees, but just to affirm, policy committee, we have John Donaldson, Chris Weigert, Dr. Temez, who are interested. Anyone interested? We have our first committee meeting tomorrow. Anyone interested in joining policy with us? Perfect, then, hearing nothing but crickets. That would be the three for, for that committee. In addition, curriculum committee has had a meeting, but we'd like to formalize that structure. Again, Melanie serving as chair for that committee, and Kelly and June have joined it as well. Anyone in addition to those three interested in curriculum committee? High trust for the work of committees, so then we would formalize that as well.
Superintendent Wimmer, just to, just to clarify, if there's a school where a member who's not appointed to a committee but wishes to attend the committee meeting, they may do so, right? I mean, there's no restriction.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely, but you cannot speak during it. It's as if you were going to a work session, you're not part of that committee, so you would have to wait for that discussion to come back to the full board, to offer your input then. But anyone's welcome to attend any committee, we live-stream them, they're archived as well, so it's always helpful, and we might drive you towards that, saying, oh, it would be helpful for you to watch this committee meeting prior to this discussion, or something of that nature, but absolutely, everyone's welcome. And those were the only formalized positions that we needed to take, so thank you for that.
So with that, do we need to form a motion to approve everything we just talked about?
That would be great.
All right, I would move to approve the board committee and delegate assignments as discussed.
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Motion and second to approve the board committee and delegate assignments as discussed. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We are on to future agenda items. First, we'll discuss our board meeting calendar. We have a number of meetings coming up, a number of committee meetings and board meetings. So we have policy committee meetings set for 4:00 PM on May 23 and May 30, here at the Education Service Center. Our next two board meetings are June 5 and June 19, 5:30 PM, also at the Education Service Center. And curriculum committee meeting on June 20, 4:30 PM, at the Education Service Center. And encourage the public who's interested in attending these meetings to double-check the official postings, in case there's a change to the date, or the time, or the location, but that's what we have on our calendar currently. Any questions? All right, on to items for follow-up and communication. John?
Yeah, I have a couple things. I was given a report by a student that there's a couple of security issues at the school that they're very concerned about, one being a door that doesn't latch closed, and it's currently by, I believe, the, I won't say it. And then, and then another item regarding hours that the doors are open, or unlocked and inaccessible to the public. So those are items that I would like discussed. Do you guys figure out, I believe, I'm not gonna say hours when they are, or anything like that? And then one other thing is, I would like to follow, have a follow-up on a, a itemized sheet that I gave you a while back, regarding disciplinary actions for specific issues in the schools. I would like to continue following up with that and actually formalize something for our district, as far as get caught swearing in the hallways and after school, Saturday detention, I don't, I don't care what it is, something like that, but we need to come up with a list of, of ways to tighten up the discipline in the schools to, you know, start cleaning up the hallways a bit, so.
Thank you, other items? Superintendent Wimmer, one of the things I was thinking of is, we hear a lot about the STAR data, and saw the night, the nice presentations here. We talk about proficiency and what that exactly means. I think sometimes I get questions from the community saying, what, only 40% proficient? That means 60% are failing. And that's not, I don't believe that's correct, based on how I understand it. But what I thought was, perhaps, and maybe it's not a board presentation, maybe it's information to the, to the board, however, I think it would be good to have a refresher on that.
We've talked about that, kind of in committee, and how we present, and the nuance of percentiles, those pieces. I think it would best come when we get, you've seen kind of data in progress, wait for that data to close, and bring back that whole end-of-year performance and what that really means. What's a percentile, what's the benchmark, what's expected, and the nuance of, of that piece. So we've had some discussions around that. So we'll frame that as an end-of-the-year presentation, so we can capture that data point and more fully explain it.
Great, thank you.
Just to add to that, I would really like to see year-over-year comparisons, too, as part of that, just to see, especially broken down by sites and everything, just to have that comparison.
Other items for follow-up and communication? Well, thank you again to everyone for attending. We have an item that is properly discussed in executive session. So I will move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction.
employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, or exercises responsibility, and take, take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, compensation. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Just pause for a moment. The reason that, that, that wording is the way that it is, is, we like to quote it directly out of Wisconsin statutes, so we have this crisply tie that we're using an appropriate, uh, reason to go into executive session. So thank you for the second. We have a motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll, as I turn to my roll sheet, I remembered this time. Ms. Krueger?
Yes.
Ms. Reiger votes yes.